Good afternoon. Welcome to the Jackson Public School District July 20th meeting. We're going to call to order at this point. We'd like to get the Pledge of Allegiance from Area Four Division, please. Dr. King?
Good afternoon, Dr. Murray, President, Vice President, Members of the Board, Audience. It is my pleasure to introduce Ethan Jabbar Lot. Ethan Jabbar Lot is a fifth grade scholar at Watkins Elementary School. He is a member of the National Honor Society, an ambassador, and a member of Anoint it New Beginnings Ministries. His favorite color is black, and he enjoys playing with his new baby sister, reading, eating, playing video games, and basketball. He aspires to be a soldier in the Army or a fireman. His parents are Edwin and Nicole Lot. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Ethan Lot.
May you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Little Mr. Ethan Lot, we surely appreciate you giving us the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have our colleague Jed Oppenheimer to give you a small token of appreciation and a certificate.
And I saw your families in the audience and some of your school leadership. Do you want to tell us who's here?
My mom, my dad, my baby sister, my granddad, and my grandma.
All right.
So, thank you so much for coming and bringing the Pledge of Allegiance. We appreciate it. Sounds like you're going to continue to serve not only our community but our country, and we appreciate that, and we know you're going to do great things when you get older. So, thank you for coming. We're going to take a quick picture. I see the principal here. Do you want to wave? Give it a little wave. Yeah! Thank you so much for the leadership of Watkins. I'm sure one's going to come take a cute picture.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. Now, we're going to have a moment of silence. Inspiration of...moment of inspiration. He's not here. We're going to move forward. This is quite a unique situation we have here. I'm going to bring Attorney Dorian Turner to speak to us tonight.
Board has asked me to address one of the board members this morning. Dr. Richard Lynn has submitted his resignation. Because of the three prior resignations of board members, it means that the board is now down to three sitting members, which means we no longer have a quorum, which means officially the board cannot have meetings and conduct business. What the board has decided to do is to receive information or have those information items that were on the agenda, but because we cannot adopt or approve an agenda or approve any action items, at that point, I think the board president has decided that the meeting will then be closed and everything will have to be moved off to when there is a fourth board member. We have called the city administration and let them know of the situation, to let them know that the board is anxiously waiting on a fourth board member, but until we get that fourth board member, at this point in time, there's really nothing that the board can do. So, we'll have the information pieces that are listed on the agenda, and I think at that point, the board members have agreed that they will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. This is new times, but anyway, we're going to move forward. As we move forward tonight, we're going to ask, at this point, for public participation.
I'll explain again to the members of the public, we had several people to sign up. A couple of those matters were items that we would normally take in executive session, but because the board can't have executive session, they can't vote to go into it, the only items of public participation that they will be hearing are those that are to be conducted in open session. So, Lee Bernard has signed up to address the board on Ward Six representation. Mr. Bernard, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Dr. Murray, and to the board. The situation that I want to speak about has already been handled, and I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Murray, and I now see Reverend Claude Tucker. He's in the building, so now we probably can do ahead and go back to the moment of inspiration. Mr. Tucker, you can proceed to the podium, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Jackson School Board, to the acting superintendent, to all who are in attendance of this meeting, I greet you in the name of our Christ. I came to share with you words of encouragement and inspiration. I like to encourage you, number one, to stay the course as you embark upon a new school year. I challenge you to remain faithful and committed to making the Jackson Public School System the best that it will be and can be this year. I challenge you to believe in your staff, in your teachers, in your parents, and even in the community. Working together, we can turn it around. I believe, and I hope there are others here who believe the same, regardless of how it look now, we can and we will turn it around. As we look to this new year, I want to challenge you not to allow negative criticism, oppositions, things that may come up to cause you to give up on reaching your goal. I am reminded of what Paul says, that we can do all things through Christ. We can, I can, do all things through Christ who strengthens us. So, this year can and will be a great year in the Jackson Public School System. In closing, my favorite verse, "All things, not some things. All things work together for the good, for those who love God and call according to His purpose." And I hope that all of us in here can believe that working together, we can turn it around.
Reverend Tucker, would you please remain for a moment? We have something for you.
Reverend Tucker, how are you?
I'm fine.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having me.
On behalf of the board, interim superintendent, the faculty and staff, and all that make up JPS, we want to thank you for coming out this evening to really give us those words of motivation as well as aspiring to do the best that we can at all times. Is there anyone here with you this evening that...
My wife is here.
Okay. May we acknowledge her? Thank you so much for being here. All right. Here's a...oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Here's an expression of our appreciation as well as a certificate to remind you of this evening.
Thank you.
And we'll take a photo.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. You really got us off to a good start.
Okay. Good evening. At this time, we'll have our superintendent's report and announcements. Just want to bring you all up to speed. We are...we've started out, you know, a new year. There's a lot of work that's been taking place. We're currently training over 400 administrators and teachers at Cordoza. It's been a great week so far. We've had some great feedback from our staff. They're really motivated and looking forward to a good year from the information that we're getting from them. The cap, we've...the cap has not closed. I did talk with MDE today, and the cap is still officially open. The cap is not...the...I'm sorry. The audit is still open. It is...that process has not closed. There was some conversation in our last meeting as to whether or not it was closed or not, but I did have to get confirmation today that it has not been closed. So, we should hear something soon. We did train today as a part of our administrative training on Wednesday. We worked with Bailey and some of our staff to train over 400 administrators and teachers on all of the components of the standards, and we feel good about how we'll start and where we are. We talked to them about the 88% completion rate that we have and the things that we've put in place, some of the new systems that we've put in place to make sure that we are compliant in all of those areas. Tonight, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our new assistant superintendents. You all know, a few months ago, we reorganized our district. We restructured. It took extensive work. We worked with the board, Mississippi School Board Association, some others to reorganize our district. And so, we've interviewed, gone through that process, and so, we have the individuals that will be directly supervising the principals in the schools. And so, I'd like them to each just take a second, very brief, to come forward and introduce themselves in their own way, okay? And we'll start with some you will know and others you won't, but we feel it's important for them to introduce themselves to the community. So, we'll start with the veteran, Dr. King, and then we'll proceed.
Good afternoon again. We were pulling straws to see who would go first, but I am Michelle King, veteran, 26 years in the system, and so, it is an honor and a privilege and a challenge that I have accepted to ensure that Area Four, which consists of Callaway and Jim Hill feeder patterns, that we do all we can together to move those feeder patterns to the next level in those individual schools.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I am Lakeisha Thomas. I am assistant superintendent for Area Two, which encompasses providing feeder pattern, wingfield feeder pattern, and also the Career Development Center. Area Two will be an A area very soon.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Arthur Belcher, and I'm an assistant superintendent for Area One, which is the gym...which is the Forest Hill feeder pattern, and we will be most likely in front of Ms. Thomas as an A-plus. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Gary Hanna. I am the assistant superintendent for Area Three. Save the best for last. I'll be the person that's over the feeder pattern for Lanier and Jackson Mer. Thank you.
So, again, we...these individuals, we'll get to know them very well this year. We'll be...there's some very high standards we've set, and we think we have a strong team in place to move the needle and give our students what they deserve in this community. So, again, just wanted to introduce these individuals to you. At this point, we will have an update on transportation. You all know, we've been working very hard to make sure that we unfold our transportation plan. We've put some things in place. We've made some purchases, done a lot of work, and we thought it was important to bring the board up to speed and also bring the community up to speed as it relates to where we are and how we're moving forward and making sure that our students are on time this year. So, Mr. Williams, at this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Murray, members of the board. Today, we will give you a brief update on how transportation is now moving forward. Before you, we have the transportation mission statement. The primary goal of Jackson Public School Transportation Department is to transport students safely to and from school each day. The Transportation Department is committed to maintaining a safe environment for all students while riding school buses and ensures that the high standards are adhered to by those who utilize JPS Student Transportation Services. Here, we're showing for the 2016-2017 school year, we had a total of 229 buses, 113 at North and 114 at South. We had two char...we have two charter buses at Vehicle Service Center. Currently, we have a total of 21 buses that have arrived. We ordered 44. Currently, 21 have arrived. We have four more that are en route to our location as we speak. Eleven other buses will be replacing at North, and 10 buses will be by...be in by the early September. On the South side, we have 10 buses that are being replaced. 12 new buses will be in by the beginning of September, I'm sorry. Nine new buses will be in...12 new buses will be in by the beginning of the school year. They are here, I'm sorry. Nine new buses will be in by the beginning of September. 21 buses are currently down. At least 92 buses will be available. They're available now. We're going to have mechanics that are going to have to start working on Saturday so we can make sure that we meet that number. At least 102 buses...South has 14 buses that are down. At least 102 buses will be ready and available at the beginning of the school year. We...for the 2016-17 school year, we did have two charter buses. We're replacing one of them, which will give us a total of three new charter buses. Now, what we're going to do is, those two charter buses that are coming in, they're air brake buses, so if we fall short at one of the terminals with a bus, we'll just move those two air brake buses to one of those terminals until our other buses come in. Also, all new buses will have two camera systems on them. Additional GPS equipment will be purchased for new bus fleet. Transportation bus driver facts. Number of returning bus drivers at Transportation North, they have a...North Terminal, they have a total of 85 that were with us on last school term and will be here this school term. South Terminal has a total of 93. We had a total of two bus attendants at North that moved up to become drivers and six at South. We did a total of 42 recommendations, 26 at North, 16 at South. Drivers for the school year, we currently have 113 at North, 115 at South. Number of drivers needed, it's going to be 125 at both terminals. So, we're currently in need of 22 drivers, 12 at North, 10 at South. Currently, all of our routes do have drivers assigned to them. We are still in need of those 22 to make sure that we have the availability of standby. Also, we don't know how the numbers are going to change once school starts and where we may have to add other buses to routes, and so, we want to make sure that we have that correct.
Excuse me. I hate to interrupt you, but can you explain that for the community, the standby piece? That we have the number of drivers that we need?
Sure. We have the number of drivers that we actually need at both terminals. However, we don't have the standbys that we're going to need.
For subs.
For subs and everything. So, you know, normally in October, November, we have a kind of like a flu epidemic, and when those drivers go out, you know, we have 20 or 25 drivers that are out, then we're short and we're faced against...faced again with shortage. So, we want to make sure that we're filling those positions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Bus drivers recommended for hire. Again, we recommended 28 at North and 21 at South. Currently, we have a total that 12 have been cleared from North, eight from South. Recommended still pending is 14 from North, eight from South. We had a total of seven, two from North, five from South, that either declined or you know, were denied. So, expected to hire, we're still waiting on a total of 26 North and 16 South. Number of bus routes for the beginning of the school year, we'll have a total of 105 at North and 107 at South. As I stated before, there are drivers assigned to every route. Currently, we have eight standbys at both for North and eight at South. But let me explain to you, when we say that there are eight at North and eight at South, it may be because they're...they may be part-time standby drivers. They don't report every day. So, we want to make sure that we get those 22 in that are full-time standbys and not someone that may come a half a day or every other day. At the bottom, it says drivers will report to work on Thursday, July 27. All drivers will receive eight days of training. Four days will be dedicated to learning routes and the PBIS training. Training will include the following: agility's performance, touring of schools, loading and unloading, left and right turns, assertive discipline, PBIS, sexual harassment, learning of routes, meet and greet other principals. Bus card mailouts. We have before you bus card mailouts will go out the end of July. Everyone should have their cards, no later than Tuesday, August the first. Also, we've put a capture in it, a special note to parents, showing that all middle school and high school special program students will no longer be picked up at their homes. They will now be picked up at the closest corner to their home.
Okay. And we want to pause there because that's extremely important in an effort to make sure that we get students to school on time. We will be unable to pick up door-to-door, and we've discussed that. So, this will be a change. Elementary will pick up...will continue to pick up door-to-door, but middle and high school, they will have to walk to a bus stop. And so, again, all of the safety provisions that are in place, not having to walk across lanes and all of those things, but that is new. And so, we want...we need the community to support us in that if we're going to work together to be able to get our students to school on time. Thank you.
Okay, that will be your report for today.
Thank you. Any questions, the board?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Williams, based upon what you have shown to us, how do you feel about getting our kids to school on time, first week of school?
Feel very good about it. Of course, you know, the first week of school, a lot of the parents won't be to enroll their students. So, we'll make sure that those that are enrolled, we're going to get them there on time. I feel good about it. My staff and I feel good about it. We're meeting on a daily...well, every other day. I know they're tired of seeing me, but we...I just want to make sure that we have enough manpower in place. So, when we roll on the first day, we will be on time.
Thank you.
Okay. How...with the change in or adjustments to...from the door-to-door to the nearest corner?
Yes, sir.
Has...how will the parents know which...
When the cards go out, it's on the card, and it's going to actually tell them the closest corner. It's going to tell them what corner their child should be at, you know, to have the time on there and everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and I'd like to commend Mr. Williams, Dr. Lockett, the entire transportation staff. They have been working very hard, putting to...a lot of work has gone into this. So, we feel confident that we...of course, you know, no one can guarantee that every bus will be on time every day because life happens, you know, things happen, but we're doing everything in our power, and we feel confident that we will have a much better on-time rate this year, and we thank you for your help, for your work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. As we move forward now, I'm trying to see... Okay. We have...we have additional information only with policies with Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. To Dr. Murray, other members of the board, you have before you policies that are just for informational items only, and these are the policies that the Bailey Group recommend that we tweak. First is the policy on mission, vision, and goals, and that policy is being changed to make it consistent with our student code of conduct handbook. And the mission, the proposed mission of the district to bring it in line is building stronger schools together so that every scholar, every day, is ready for life. The vision is to become a top-ranked learning community that graduates productive, caring citizens who are prepared to succeed in a global society. The goals changed somewhat due to a workshop that the board had, I believe in March, to delineate the focus of the district. And those revised goals are to increase academic performance and achievement, to provide a safe school climate, and to maintain fiscal integrity and accountability. And as I said, these are just for informational purposes, not for voting. Policy IGB is the grade adjustment and minimum grade policy, and this policy was suggested for revision because while the principal can assign our responsibility for maintaining the grades, the students' records at the school level, the principal, we're told, cannot delegate that responsibility. That responsibility still rests with the principal as the building-level leader. So, our policy previously said that the principal was allowed to delegate that to the guidance counselor, but...
What's the difference between delegate and assign?
Delegate is that, as I've...as I understand it, is that you not only assign it, but you give up the responsibility for it. And so, we're saying that while someone...while the principal can assign it, the responsibility rests with him. He cannot delegate the responsibility of that. Policy JCB is the student code of conduct...student conduct policy, and that was changed to reflect the correct name of our student...of our code of student conduct handbook. And so, we just wanted to bring all of that in line.
And is...and that's consistent with what we voted on in June?
Mm-hmm. It is. The...the promotion and retention policy needed to have a technical amendment to coincide with the IGB policy because the average passing grade for elementary students is 70, and it was incorrect. I think it was 65. And so, we made that correct as well as for the average passing grade for high school students. Then, the Bailey Group recommended that we establish a pre-kindergarten program that just kind of sets forth that the board authorizes the program, and the procedures are in the handbook. So, we've...we've done that. The Bailey Group also recommended that we establish a policy that delineates our special programs. So, we've tried to delineate JROTC, our IB programs, our whole arts program that's at Casey, and there's a few more that we've also put in there, and we'll continue to update that before we bring it back to you for approval. And we've also outlined the renaming of the schools that you all did some time ago, Powell Academy of Military Science and Cywell Academy of Leadership Preparation, to make that official. Then the last policy that is for information is the salaries policy. And this policy really did not have any changes, I don't believe, but it was brought to the Board to make you all aware of the procedures that go with the salary administration, how employees are put on the scale, and how they get raises, and what they're brought in as. And so you will see with this policy, the salary scale for classified employees and administrators that the Board approved for the 2014-2015 school year. And those are all the policies for informational purposes.
Yeah, one question. With the salary and contract components that policy area there, does it enable us to strengthen some of the things that we were, I guess, pointed out in our cap plan? This goes along with strengthening that, or does it give us the ability to strengthen some of the weaknesses that were identified in our, those pointed out in the cap plan?
You mean with salaries?
Yeah, with salaries or whatever those things that was pointed out in terms of the program we have to use to update and so on. So does this policy speak to that?
The policy doesn't really address that. I think that might be more in the procedures that make it more clear, and we did tweak those a little bit, to make it clear that the superintendent can recommend salaries, but the Board still has to approve it. And there are certain cases where the recommendation might be a frozen salary in certain circumstances as the Board knows, but that needed to be in the procedures.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Shepherd. It looks like...
Ms. Miller, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Murray, Ms. Sims, members of the Board. I present for your information only tonight, the preliminary financial report for the month ended, and actually for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. As you're aware, that is our fiscal year end. We are in the process still of finalizing things. We have what we basically call accruals in accounting world, expenses that occurred at this point that were for the prior year, so we will be making some adjustments. As we have done in the past, we bring this to you for preliminary information, just to kind of see where we were and where we ended up, June 30, without any adjustments. But we will bring to you a final recommend, a final financial report for the fiscal year end, more than likely within the next 45 days or so. We get more and more aggressive about closing our books earlier every year so that we can ensure that we continue to stay on time for our audits. And so we will be, I think after the next board meeting, we will be able to close the books and start working toward finishing up the year so we can get our auditors started. We have already started some preliminary work with them, and we wanted to bring you this report for your information only.
Thank you. All right, as we move forward, it looks like, actually, we have an information action item, number 10, and we're talking about strategic budget planning. Ms. Miller and some of the Board members will be working together that we develop a strategic plan along with our community, our stakeholders. The entire district will be working together that we strategize, not just one year, not just two years, but a three- to five-year period of time. So we're going to be working toward that. We've got to get some dates where we can work together.
Yes, ma'am. And as we talk during the budget process, I've already started doing some research on some software programs that actually allow citizens to go in and make recommendations on the budget online. They can see the numbers. One of the school districts in Colorado has a very nice program, and it's not too, too expensive. But I am looking at that because I think, Mr. Oppenheimer and I talked about that, and we did at the last board meeting, about having citizen input and making sure that our stakeholders, even if they can't attend the meeting, they still have access to that information and can make recommendations online. So I will be bringing this forward to you, hopefully in the near future, to type, to kind of electronically put that position out there and opportunity for our stakeholders to participate in the budget process.
Thank you. That'd be fantastic. I think the transparency will be welcome. With that said, everything else are, is consent agenda items and finance, general and personal. Without a quorum, we're not going to be able to discuss those items on tonight. At this point, we are scheduled to have our next board meeting, I believe it's on August 1st. So hopefully, the Mayor's Office and the City Council will have the next person to sit on our board with us. As you, the public may know, the way the boards are established, the Mayor appoints and the City Council confirms. So we're waiting with those measures to go forth. So hopefully, we'll have them in place and we can move forward with what we've got. But I would like to say, we are moving forward with everything that we have to do to make sure our schools start out, the children arrive on time, and our teachers are in place, and we're going to start learning first day of school. So we're looking forward, Dr. Murray and his team has been working very hard to make sure everything is in position. So I don't want the public to worry about where we are because we have already have a forward motion to have success this year. And I heard those area superintendents talk about A, so I'm excited about that portion. So, Dr. Murray, if you, do you have anything else?
No, just, I totally agree. We're moving forward. Feel very good about where we are and our direction for this school year. So we thank the community and look forward to working with everyone to have a great year.
Well, we thank you for coming out tonight. The meeting is adjourned.[1757.83][1757.83](APPLAUSE).[1758.83]